Morning and welcome everybody to briefing. This morning, we will have a presentation from Tammy Palmquist on Development Services Fees. Tammy?
Good morning, Council, Council President. Tammy Palmquist with the DSC and I will be presenting with my consultants who are virtual from FCS Group to explain the process that we've gone through this last year, looking at costs and to present what we have today. You will see an amendment come out. We clarified a couple of things in the fee table where it has a variable rate. I wanted to clarify exactly what that variable unit was because it differed between electrical and mechanical kilowatt, different things. So I made sure to clarify so that it was very straightforward of any variable fees. There was a couple of spelling errors and then combined the draft report and appendix into one final for you guys. So you'll see that coming around. We also did add a section in the ordinance where it will then codify the CPI collection. So that was not quite right in the first ordinance draft. So with that, you have seen the first couple of slides because Steve was not able to be here today because of a cabinet retreat. He wanted to be able to, you know, still present and interact with you. So the first two slides are going to be very similar to what we've already gone over. And then I will kick it over to my consultant team to go into the meat of the report. So as you know, DSC is an enterprise fund. We are not reliant on the general fund. We are based on our own services. So since we haven't updated fees since 2008, with the caveat of elevator fees, those were updated in 2013? 2012, 2013. So we, there really weren't a lot of things that we updated in that. That was a very in-depth study at that time. Everything else has kind of been out since 2008. So that's a very long time. As you know, things have changed over that time. Cost of services for everybody, private sector, public sector, labor costs, material costs. So this, yes?
Sorry, I was just gonna ask, was this looked at after the recession and just decided not to address it because of the situation at the time?
I cannot speak for my predecessor, but this was something that we identified when I came into this position that has not been looked at and needed to be right-sized.
Just such a long time to not look at it, so.
Yes, it is. I mean, this, it's taken us a year. Like, this is a very in-depth process. It takes a lot of time. I know sometimes that if you're busy with other things, this is not something you want to take on, but we felt that it was a very important initiative. So like we said before, we are looking at a CPI. So this will be a yearly update that will come back to council. So you'll see our fee schedule every, probably every December so that we can update it by January. So we are using, and our consultants will go over the mechanism for that as well. We're not adjusting the ICC tables. Those are adjusted semiannually, so we just adopt those as they're updated by the Code Council. One of the complaints, and you, I'm sure you guys have all heard it too, is it's not the fees that we're charging, it's the time that it takes. Well, in order to affect the time that it takes, I have to build capacity. In order to build capacity, I need to raise the fees so I can pay for the staff. So this, it's where we're at. It's just plain and simple. I appreciate that you guys approved the SBO to add staff. We are getting them on board. We have our engineering clerk four started on Monday. Our planner one will start on Monday, the ninth. And we're working with civil service for the plan reviewer list as well. So they're coming. We'll get them on board and get them trained up. We're also initiating a more rigorous training schedule for our permit texts. We want to make sure that they're getting all of the information firsthand so that they, you know, know how to apply it, know how to, you know, send it out to our customers and how to have that dialogue and interaction. So that's something that we've started with our inspectors. We're going to move into our plan review teams and our permit teams as well. So training is a big portion of that, getting everybody up to the same, same level. Another thing that I've brought before you a few times is the Senate Bill 5290. This was the requirement that we look at our permitting, our stop clocks, our timelines, our review times, and make sure that we're in compliance with the state legislature. I've been part of the 5290 work group with Commerce. We meet this summer, it was every two weeks. Now it's once a month. I also presented with Commerce at the APA conference in Bellevue in October. So definitely attuned to this. We've already adopted our measures to make sure we're in compliance with 5290, but it is something that we want to make sure as we're moving forward, we're building that capacity so that we're ensuring we're meeting our timelines. All right, with that, I'm gonna turn it over to our consultants.
Thank you, Tammy. Good morning, Council members and staff. My name is Shivani Lal. I'm the project manager. With me, I have Jeff Swanson. He's our senior project manager. And Evan Hoffman, he's our team analyst for this study. Thank you for this opportunity. And like Tammy said, it's been a year-long process. So a big congratulations to city staff for supporting this effort, a lot of collaboration in space. But before we dive in, let me kind of give you a quick overview of today's agenda. We'll start with a brief study overview. Setting the stage for our discussion, Jeff will review the insights from stakeholder interviews, incentives for developments. Then he'll discuss the fee structures, highlights best practices, and summarize the staff-level analysis. I will provide an overview of the development fee study, walk you through the project approach and methodology. Then we'll present the study findings, discuss the fee structure, the proposed fee structure. Evan will discuss the survey and technology surcharge component of the study. So it is a comprehensive study. So we looked at the engaging of the community stakeholders and then the analytics, the data, the permit history, and then looking at the surveys with the nearby jurisdictions are ranked against the city of Spokane. And all of that to come to a decision that we'll discuss in the later end, on the tail end. Let us know if you have any questions as we go along. This is an interactive, engaging session. So next slide, Tammy?
It's okay.
Thank you. So study overview. Perfect. Thank you. The study overview is centered around evaluating fees for critical services for the DS, including building services, current planning, development engineering, the study's scope. The scope of the study is comprehensive, includes several key components, stakeholder engagements and level of services. This involves gathering feedbacks from stakeholders, interviews, understanding the expectation, and ensuring service needs are met. Best practices and process improvements against best practices and identifying ways to improve efficiencies, to provide the best customer experience. Incentive for developing, exploring fee structure that encourages development while maintaining fairness. The comprehensive technical analysis, looking at the historic permit data, a deep dive into data, and the process to support informed fee-setting decisions. Staff-level analysis, evaluating staff needs to align with resources, with the service demand that the city is facing. And a full cost and cost recovery analysis, accessing the full cost of delivering the services and ensuring fees are aligned to the cost recovery goals. The other components are technology surcharge, reviewing technology fee as it supports advancements that enhance service delivery. The study aims to create a balanced, equitable, and sustainable fee structure while addressing city's operational goals and community expectation. So I'll transition to Jeff, who's led our stakeholder engagements along with other tasks. Next slide, please.
Thank you, Council. It's good to be with you again. Hopefully, can everyone hear me okay? It's the first test of my audio. So for a deeper, we did a deeper dive into this material back, I want to say in June, where the bulk of the presentation that we gave was focused on the stakeholder interviews that were completed. And let's see. I cannot see the slide.
It's slide six.
So, okay, there we go. I think I can see it on the screen now. So eight interviews were completed. The interviewees were a broad spectrum of the development community, engaged in single-family residential, middle housing, multifamily developments, some mixed use in commercial developments. We talked about incentives for development, talked, asked about fee structures and best practices, and also asked about the level of service and how that compares to the staffing levels at the city. Majority, what we heard from the stakeholders was that there is value in increasing the fees to improve the velocity, the throughput in the permitting process. So the turnaround time, shortening that turnaround time, has a high value to development stakeholders. Next slide. So in terms of incentives for development, we can go back one slide. There we go. For incentives for development, the largest and most active program in the state is in Spokane for the multifamily tax exemption. This is very widely used amongst your developers in your state. The statewide people and office-to-people incentives, Spokane's the first city in the state of Washington to utilize both of those programs. Next slide. One of the issues that came up, we asked about and was suggested by some of the developers was to consider a fee for expedited review. This is something that, as we discussed with staff, this was something that they were in favor of, provided that there was capacity to do that expedited review. Some of the developers suggested that if you pay for a jump in the queue, and everybody pays for a jump in the queue, then the result is still the same. So, you know, the equity implications of that and the benefits of that need to be carefully weighed against the available capacity to process those permits. There was emphasis on general process improvements, lean and continuous improvement and technology investments that should reduce the processing time and enhance the ease of doing business with the city. Next slide. Middle housing development, of course, you implemented some changes in zoning to allow for more middle house in the city. Some of the feedback we heard about that was that the zoning piece, the permitting piece on the building side works well, but with other segments of the development process, especially on utilities, stormwater, and street side, is challenging. And I know that development services staff are reviewing that holistically with other departments to see that those projects can scale in accordance with policy direction that changed the zoning. Pre-approved building plans for developers, especially on the single-family side, detached and attached, who develop similar floor plans, similar building designs in a single development. What they're asking for is rather than going through the full process of review each time an application is submitted, if they can get prior approval on some standard plans, and this is something that staff have been working on developing. The idea being that that'll shorten the amount of time it takes to turn around building permits. Fee reductions and subsidies. So our other suggestion here is to consider fee reductions and waivers and subsidies for high-priority development types, such as affordable housing and middle housing, as council has taken steps to address housing capacity issues in your community, but also for economic development, for target employment types and traded sectors that are part of your economic development strategy. Next slide.
It's not letting me go.
There we go. Regularly review fees and charges, keep pace with the rising costs and the needed investments and resources, technology and infrastructure. Of the general facilities charges that were updated about a year or two ago, and that they hadn't been updated in some time, and so the increase was fairly substantial. And so the feedback from stakeholders was if you review those on a consistent basis, then the impact, financial impact of those cost increases is smoothed over time. Some suggestions to improve case management and enhance integration of development engineering utilities with the planning and building reviews that go on with an application, ensuring that the first round comments are comprehensive and that they're consolidated, that everything is caught in the first round in terms of feedback on an application, so that things aren't coming up in subsequent rounds that constitute new information or new requirements that are presented, and to maintain consistency in those subsequent comment rounds with prior reviews. Staff, DSC staff have introduced positions for case managers, and I believe hiring has taken place or some shift in resources to allow for greater case management approaches there in the Development Services Center.
Jeff, let me just explain that because we didn't hire additional staff. So we're implementing a pilot program right now for what does the case manager role look like? So I have two senior planners who will be working out of class to really take on that role. So this is a higher level than just a permit manager. This is not just somebody shepherding the process through, but will be able to work with other departments if there needs to be additional eyes on it, additional resources dedicated to it, if it is a, you know, a project that has a lot of significance to the region. So we want to make sure that, we just want to make sure that we're dedicating the resources to make sure that these bigger projects that might have an opportunity to go sideways or have misinformation, that we're bringing everybody to the table from the beginning and make sure it's a smooth process. So as the year goes on, we'll identify what that need is and add staff as needed, and bring in different technical, maybe somebody from engineering, maybe somebody from building, so that we have those experts at the table.
So on that, I guess, is there some conversation around basically doing what you're saying, but doing it all in that first round of comments or as much as possible?
There, we're actually bringing the case managers on before they even submit a project to the city. As soon as that project is identified, we meet with them, figure out what their goals, what their timelines are, and work to set that all up before they even have plans in.
So would they also be able to help shepherd sort of external agencies where there's issues, such as the Health District when it comes to water, you know, things like that, they can hold up projects pretty considerably?
That's the hope. We're, this is the first time trying it, so it's, you know, we're gonna have to figure out what all of those pinch points are. But yes, that is the hope, that they will be the one reaching out and making sure that everything is following the same timeline and process. Sorry, Jeff, go ahead.
Okay. Let's see if we can, there we go, get that back on the screen. So the other piece of feedback was just on holistic policy implementation, to make sure that all functions and departments are aligned with those broad policy goals and objectives. And that really comes from the approach on middle housing, where planning, zoning, building were clearly aligned with council policy, but because departments can operate in silos, there are different chains of authority, sometimes those, the implementation of those may not, the water doesn't get to the end of the row, so to speak, all the time. And so I know that Tammy and her team are spearheading, making sure that that happens. So next slide. Before I talk about the staffing level analysis, just one kind of final comment on stakeholder interviews. So the stakeholders that were interviewed, they represent developers who do work, some of them just work locally in the Spokane area, northern Idaho, out in Spokane County, but some of them work in the Boise market in Portland area, in Seattle area. And they had high praise for Tammy and her team and how they approach the developers in ways that are helpful and try to take obstacles out of their path so that they can be successful in delivering their projects. So there was high praise for Tammy and her team from the stakeholders that were interviewed. On the staffing level analysis, we looked at the permit data between 2013 and 2023. That modeling considers the level of effort for each type of permit by broader section or division, building, planning, and engineering. We use the 2023 available hours for each of those sections based on the staffing level. We net out the amount of leave time that employees have. So we look at how many hours are actually available to process the work that comes across permit counter, to look at the sufficiency of the capacity to the actual demand. And what we found using that data was that the staffing levels really are not sufficient for the volume of work that's coming across the permit counter, something that I think staff intuitively felt and understand, and certainly something that the development community conveyed in the stakeholder interviews. As the new permitting system is implemented, that will, as I understand it, afford for better level of effort tracking by permit type. And so staff will be able to better dial in where specifically there are staffing shortfalls, and particularly as they consider Senate Bill 5290 and the timing constraints that are implied by that new state law. And so that'll be a good tool to help resource the department in such a way that you're meeting both 5290's requirements as well as the expectations of the council policymakers and the development community and the community at large in terms of processing permits efficiently. Next slide.
Thank you, Jeff. I just want to make sure you guys can hear me. Can we get consensus? Okay, perfect, thank you. So now I will walk you through, Evan and I will look at the technical analysis. So we're transitioning into this diagram here. So the FCS comprehensive study that's been a year-long process has two components. Part one is the technical analysis, part two is the policy analysis. Altogether, there's five steps. The technical analysis, identification of DS permit services. So the study began with identifying permit services for building, planning, engineering programs. Staff also considered contributions from historic preservations and planning services. City staff estimated their times required for processing the permits, applications by position, classifications, and refining these estimates through multiple discussion rounds. That was part of step one. We, again, like I said, we did look at historic data, so the data was three to five years and is of 2022 study. And step two is building the cost layers. We looked at labor costs with department labor, staff time allocation into direct, indirect, and overhead categories, and then overhead labor cost, proportion of costs were allocated to building, planning, and engineering based on FTE. The other component is the indirect services or the non-labor cost. These were reviewed separately for building, planning, engineering, historic preservations, and planning services, and excluded any non-reoccurring expenses, such as payments or contingencies. Then we looked at department overhead for non-labor, overhead, non-labor expenses, such as materials were allocated to DS categories, the same proportion as labor overhead. such as materials were allocated to DS categories, that are same proportion as labor overhead. This process ensures a detailed and equitable allocations of both labor and non-labor costs to support the city's development services program. Step three is the defining of the full cost. So with all of step one and step two data, we're able to calculate and model the full cost of service that was calculated for the DS building, planning, engineering, and a portion of historic preservation and planning services. The costs include labor, non-labor, indirect services, overhead, and allocated across permit fee services. The cost of service by department categories, primary focus was DS planning, engineering programs. So step three was concluded. Part two of policy analysis comes in, and this was findings, using the findings from part one and the results, the team collaborated with city staff for steps four and five for fee settings. Next slide, please. So the study approach is using the guiding principles that is rooted in the Washington case laws. City of Spokane is 100% cost recovery for a direct cost for permitting services with a reasonable portion of support cost and overhead. Additionally, general government efforts such as comprehensive long-range planning or non-permit code enforcements are excluded per case law requirements. This became our fundamentals as we processed and analyzed the data. Next slide, please. Since Tammy highlighted in the beginning of the CPIU calculations for escalation, we suggest the city adopts an automatic increase escalation using an average of CPIU and CPIW to ensure consistent fee adjustments. The CPIU represents 89% of US population and measures price changes for urban consumers, while CPIW, a subset of CPIU, focuses on urban wage earners and workers. Additionally, the cost of service analysis for this study is primarily labor-focused, reflecting the resources required to deliver the service. So this approach ensures fee adjustments remain aligned with economic trends and accurately account for labor cost. Next slide. Thank you. Next, we'll share the fee study findings. Thank you. So in 2022, approximately a little less than 92,000 hours were devoted by the staff tasked to deliver DS activities. Using this data, FCS calculated full recovery fees for specific services based on estimated staff time needed for tasks like reviewing, adjudication, and approving of permits. The study concludes that DS has the ability to adjust fees up to the full cost for each activity. However, it's important to note to ensure that no fee exceeds the specific cost of service for individual activity or division. And lastly, as Tammy shared, it is worth noting that building valuation fees are not tied directly to the labor estimate. Instead, they're typically tied to the International Code of Council building valuation data, which reflects construction market conditions, and that was not evaluated. Next slide, please. Perfect, thank you. So here we have a table. In examining the table, the department's cost was broken into three categories, direct services, indirect services, and overhead. And as you can see, those were then further looked into as labor cost, non-labor cost to realize the full cost of service. So for this division, we're looking at a little over $10.5 million of total cost, of which 8.1, close to 8.2 million is in labor, and non-labor is close to 2.4 million. And further breaking that into the rate components, we're looking at labor, non-labor, and with our calculation of total cost and total hours, direct hours, we're looking at an hourly rate of $115.26. That is the time that the staff is quantified as for providing service to the constituents. Per hour is $115.26.
I will add that currently called out in the SMC, as noted, where additional staff time was needed was billed at a rate of 75.
Thank you. So this is a really nice slide where City of Spokane is ranked against the other studies that FCS has conducted. So again, these are FCS specifics. We've had, we've done cost of service analysis, but the last five years, these are the numbers or so that we're looking at. City of Spokane is ranked at $115.26, of which the labor and non-labor cost is broken down. We have Port Angeles slightly less than 100, whereas Lynwood, close to $200. Thank you, next slide, please. So looking at the same information in a graph format, we're looking at the total cost of a little over $10.5 million, of which about $6.1 million are direct labor, 1.3 is indirect labor, 700,000 for non-labor costs, and 2.5 in overhead cost. At the current analysis, using the data, we're looking at the city recovering at 64% of cost recovery. Couple of things to note with our study and analysis. We are excluding specific revenues that are not part of the study calculation per case laws, such as grants, GF, any connection fees, and grants revenues. And we're also looking at the department at a full capacity, so vacant positions are calculated in our analysis, labor and benefits that are at a higher step, as well as the volume of permit makes an impact on the cost recovery rate.
Please ignore where the commas are placed.
I was just about to say, I just want to confirm, yeah, so 2.4, 1.3, 6.1.
Yeah. This does include the four positions that we added this year. So before we added the four positions, it was a little bit higher, but since we added those FTEs, we had to take that into consideration so that you got a true picture of today.
Thank you. Next slide. So this transitions us to the later part of our study. So we looked at the first part was Jeff's effort, understanding the lay of the land, what the clients, what the residents and business owners are sharing, the numbers, the data analysis part. Now we're looking at the proposed fee changes in the next steps. So next slide, Tammy. So things that the city considered in this project. For fee setting, city staff focused on aligning policies with key considerations to meet operational and community needs. Comparable cities, the goal is to position the city within a comparable municipality, ensuring competitiveness while maintaining fairness. Customer expectation, city staff prioritized maintaining and enhancing service levels to meet customer expectation, addressing stakeholder feedback, particularly the need for quicker service recovery, delivery. And then funding needs. Increased funding is essential to hire additional staff, which directly supports faster service responses and improves operational efficiencies. Enhancing staff levels allows the city to address workload challenges while maintaining community service expectations effectively. These considerations ensure fee setting decisions are grounded in fairness, customer satisfaction, and operational sustainability. Next slide. So this here is a sample set of what we're seeing. So we have the program areas on the far left with the descriptions, what the current fees is as of 2024, and what the proposed fees are, and the level of increases in those specific fee categories. Of note, we are looking overall approximately 10% increase.
So this was just to pull out some very common permits that we see on a daily basis, and also to note that we were very specific in the land use. We did not raise the rate of short plats. We recognize that infill is still very important in our community. So last year or the year before, we did the preliminary short plats at that 350 for ones that include minor engineering. So that's ones that are already on paved street, already have utilities in front of them. They're not having to do main extensions. So true infill, putting a house between two other houses, or some townhouses between two other houses. So kept those exactly the same because we are seeing a lot of those, and that's what we want to encourage. Just so you know, like, this wasn't across the board. We looked at every single fee and what impact it would be, what L and I charged. We wanted to be, again, competitive and fair, but we, you know, we're still trying to do a cost recovery, but we need to be competitive. So the full fee table is in the report. You can go line by line and see those as well. Shivani.
Perfect, thank you so much. So we'll go to next slide, and I'll transition to Evan, our senior analyst, to bring us home.
Perfect, thank you, Shivani. Hello, council. So as Shivani said, I will be wrapping things up. We'll just be going over really the last item we wanted to present, which is the list of the survey that we, what we did was we looked at other jurisdictions. As you can see, Spokane County, Spokane Valley, Vancouver, Washington, Tacoma, Seattle, and also two Idaho cities, Boise and Post Falls. Because it's important to kind of bring things down to, you know, what people are charging in comparable cities versus what we in Spokane are currently charging, as well as, you know, what the actual proposed fee is going to be. We've done a lot of work with the analytics, you know, detailing the cost of service, detailing the cost recovery, but now it kind of comes back down to the actual schedule, and we can actually look at what people are going to be paying. And having the knowledge of what people are paying in neighboring cities as well as comparable cities is, you know, of course, important when actually determining what to set fees at for our own city. So with that said, I'll just be detailing three different examples for the fees. Unfortunately, you know, we can't provide a survey for every single fee that we're adjusting, similar to, you know, how we only showed a couple sample fees on the previous slide. But hopefully, these are still informational and demonstrate, you know, in general, where Spokane lies among neighbors. So next slide. The first example that we have is going to be the final short plat. You know, this was, I believe, shown on the previous slide for the sample increases. Generally, what we've seen is that Spokane falls near the bottom. You know, it is above a couple Spokane Valley as well as the two Idaho cities. And even with our proposed increases from $1,800 up to $2,200, you know, it's only, we've brought just about one place raising to where it's slightly ahead of what the county is charging. But as you can see, is still a good amount lower than Seattle, Tacoma, as well as Vancouver, Washington.
So this is for a regular short plat, not a short plat with minor engineering. So those infill ones that already have utilities, already have paved streets. So this would be a short plat that doesn't have a paved street, has to bring in utilities. That does take additional time to review. But still a fairly minor increase.
So the next one that we'll look at is going to be the residential building permit. As Tammy and I believe Shivani mentioned before, when it comes to building permits, those are often informed by the International Code Council. So the ICC for Building provides the rates that valuation should be charged at. And this building permit fee is still following those rates. We actually have not increased the amount that fees are charged at valuation. But what has increased for residential projects is the amount that is going to be charged for plan review. So the actual difference that you see for the City of Spokane current at around 3,000 to the proposed of 3,700, that comes purely from the increase of building valuation, which I believe was increased to, was increased to 25% of the overall project value.
It was at 25%, we increased it to 50%.
At 25, all right, thank you, Tammy. Yes, it was at 25% increase to 50%, and that accounts for that difference.
Like Evan said, this is only on the plan review portion. This is not on the building permit portion. Plan review has intrinsically gotten harder. We have to think about the WUI, we have to think about the energy code. You know, there's a lot more regulations that are placed on our plan reviewers that need to look, you know, it takes longer to do a plan review. Even there's some things in the new zoning laws that there's some design elements. You know, we're making sure it's front door facing the street. Are there, is there glazing? So all of this takes a little bit of time. So we're still under the recommended 65% by only going with 50%, but it is allowing us to capture that additional time.
Exactly. And then lastly, the last example that I have is going to be for commercial projects. So this one is a bit more simple to explain, and that's because, you know, our proposed fee for the city actually does not change. That increase in plan review, that actually only occurred for residential projects. So it was untouched for commercial. And again, we're not touching the existing schedule that is based on valuation because, again, as Shivani said, you know, those, when you're charged on valuation, it's not going to be based on a cost of service element. It's not going to be based on the time spent. It's simply going to follow the valuation curve that is determined by the city. And Spokane, you know, ranks at the bottom, so it is cheapest for, you know, commercial projects, but it is still fairly comparable. You can see, you know, it isn't, it isn't too far, it's just barely coming in at the end. So it isn't set apart from comparable jurisdictions by very much. I will add that some of the variance, you know, between cities doesn't come down to the actual rates charged, but it actually comes down to the structure of the valuation tiers. You know, it is up to the city whether or not to be changing those, as I say, add a higher tier that assesses maybe between different levels of valuation. So that isn't fully consistent, you know, among all cities. So I'm just presenting that as a reason why there is variance between others.
Evan, we have a question from council.
Oh, absolutely.
So on this, when we're looking at the residential and the commercial, I know that when we're talking code, apartments become commercial. And so can you help me understand where apartments are going to fall in this?
So three or more units will fall under the IBC, so they would use the valuation table. So it would be more of a commercial.
So your triplexes and your quadplexes that are going into like a residential area, that's not a residential, that's a commercial, and those costs are not being raised?
If they're townhomes on individual lots, those are single-family homes. If this is a four-plex or a six-plex small apartment building, they're under the commercial.
Thank you.
And I will add, while commercial valuation, we're not adjusting that, and we're not adjusting the percentage that we charge, where commercial projects will see a minor increases in their trades. So we did look at the trade permits, we did look at the electrical, mechanical, plumbing, boilers, you know, so there will be nominal increases in those. But again, those are your direct labor, so that's your inspections, your, you know, every single outlet. So those you'll see in that fee schedule.
Yes, thank you, Tammy. That is important to add, that these are not portfolios. What's depicted here is simply that, the permit for building. Next slide. So a little separate from our examples of fees, what we also included in our analysis was a ranking of the technology surcharge. So what we can see here is that the City of Spokane currently does not charge, does not have a surcharge for the technology fee, which actually does set it apart from a number of jurisdictions that we can see across the state. Some of these, you know, have implemented technology surcharge in recent years. And generally, they fall between 2.5 to 5%. You know, you can see the City of Semamish is an outlier at 15%, which is a which is a good deal higher. But after looking at this, you know, it is a staff recommendation that a technology surcharge be implemented at approximately 2.5%. And I can share that, you know, that surcharge is applied on top of permits and the fees being charged. So looking at all the revenue, we can determine that, you know, it will yield around $200,000 in revenue a year that is earmarked and set aside purely for, you know, technology replacement or other costs that stem from technology replacements.
We have another question.
Yeah, and I guess my question would be, I understand, you know, there's a lot of other people that are doing it. But if we're right sizing our fees, what is the need for an extra 2.5% technology fee outside of just adding a couple hundred thousand dollars?
So the technology fee would be solely used for improvements like us going over to LAMA and, you know, those implementation costs. It would be helping the other departments that use that permitting system to offset those costs to them because they are general fund. So this could be used for that pot that pays to improve technology, add additional services. Maybe there's another third-party app that makes another process simpler. And it would provide those fees coming from our customers to support our customers in advancing technology opportunities and hopefully not impact general funding as well.
And that sort of future planning, that's not built into the fee study and the fee assessments that we're going to be doing here?
No, we looked simply at costs based on those permits. We didn't bring the cost of the permitting system itself into it. We will be reducing our costs by going with the Davenport Group away from Osala, but this was something that we looked at separately.
How would, I guess, how would that be separate then from your direct or your indirect costs for doing business?
Evan?
I can add to that. The answer is kind of simply that the cost for the technology is not included in some of the line items that we included within the full cost of service so that we're not double counting the cost for providing that technology. The answer, you know, we could have included it within our full cost of service and therefore within the fee increases. But by having it separate, it allows us to create this technology surcharge, which is assessed by percentage, you know. So that way, different permits can equitably contribute back to that cost of providing the technology. But it's simply kept separate, so it can be implemented on this percentage.
Okay, sorry to harp on this, but I guess what would then be the purpose? If the dollars are going to be coming in either way, why not just work it into our fees instead of having a separate 2.5% fee? I mean, it's tomato-tomato situation here, I understand, but just trying to figure out why we wouldn't just build that into our cost.
When Jeff interviewed a bunch of the stakeholders, that was a question that came up as well, and it was sort of a mixed bag. Some of them wanted to see it as a separate because when they're itemizing and looking at their receipts and looking at, okay, this was the $6.50, $6.50 charge for Washington State Building Code, you know, this was the charge for the plan review, this was the charge. They like seeing it all separate. There were some that didn't care, that, you know, I'll pay what I pay. So it really was kind of a mixed bag of how they wanted to see it on the receipts. If we break it out as a separate charge, it's able to be itemized. If not, then...
Yeah, and I would just say, take this for what it is. So as a former contractor, some people are like, I just need to know the amount, whatever, no big deal. Others wanted to see a very detailed itemized list of what they were getting charged for. And I would say, in my experience working with people, if there was a separate 2.5% fee or 2.5% charge, even if it's baked into the total number over here, but instead of putting it in over here, we just added a 2.5% as dealing with people in this space, that extra fee could be seen as, why do I need an extra fee here? Versus if it was just baked into the total cost over here. I would suggest that, but, because I'm not saying we should forego it. Obviously, anything that we're doing with our costs and stuff, we need to be planning for. And I've been, you know, very supportive of us updating our fees and getting to the right spot. I just think that the perception of it, less than the cost of it, would be more irritating if it were broken out. But that's one man's perspective, so.
We did discuss it. This is where we landed.
Okay, appreciate it.
Okay.
Hey, Tammy?
Yep.
So just on that, it was one of those things where you ask eight people their point of view, and you get 12 to 15 different answers.
Totally, yep.
But, you know, so for the most part, you know, there were some that said, definitely want to see the detailed breakout of what I'm paying for, right? So itemized. And then the rest were indifferent about, you know, at the end of the day, whether you break it out or not, that's what it costs to get a permit. But there wasn't anyone insisting that it all be baked into one fee, so on that other end of the spectrum. So you had just sort of this vacillation between indifference and want to see it broken out in detail, is what we heard from, you know. Granted, the sample size was eight, but the message that we got from those eight, that's what it constituted.
Any other... So at this point, we are open to any questions. If there's things that you've read, that you want clarified, any of us can answer that. We did have, like I said earlier, sent around, you'll be seeing an amendment that clarified some of the variable fees. It also cleaned up the ordinance. I've been working with Chris over the last couple days to make sure that all of that language is correct and accurate. And we added the section for the CPI so that it will be in the SMCs and not just on the fee table. I think those were the main changes that you'll see. There wasn't anything substantive that was changed.
Councilor McCattcart?
Yeah, just two questions. I guess, what is the timeline then to relook at these fees going forward?
So right now, the way the ordinance is set is that we would look at CPI for January 1st of '26. We can... My thought is, we can do that. We'll bring it back to you. You can choose to accept that or not accept that at that time. But after we implement our new permitting system, because that's another fun project we're doing, is that about 18 months from go-live, I want to take that new data because we will have such better time tracking capabilities within that process that we'll have more of a stop clock in our hands and their hands to be able to say, this record type takes this long, this many people touch it. This is the hourly rate of every person that touches it, and go back through this to make sure that our assumptions were correct. It may be that some permit types are much easier now in the new permitting system that we could reduce those. It may be that some, we were way off, how much time it actually takes. It will provide us a better average. And so we'll look at that, of course, bring that back to you as well. So that's my goal, is about 18 months of new data.
And then after the 18 months, would it be yearly that we would just review?
Yearly would be the CPI. And then I think we need to have something that says, like, every five years, we do a true-up.
Well, I just, and if we're at least looking at it every year, it probably accomplishes my concern, which is just with housing-specific fees, obviously, you know, markets change, things change. Maybe the crisis gets worse or goes away or whatever. We may just want to reevaluate fees up or down as they relate to housing, you know. And I think a consistent review is just good to make sure that's top of mind.
Yeah, so as it's set now, it'll come back every, well, every January. So we'll be coming back every December, you know, when you're looking at the budget.
Yeah.
And just, you'll have that opportunity to look at it. We'll have this opportunity to have discussions about it, what we're seeing, what we're not seeing.
And then my other question, back very beginning, the preapproval that you talked about, which is, I think, a great idea, something really important. But what I'm hoping is that we can formulate a system where it's not just plans that we've come up with and designed, but where we are actually allowing builders who reutilize plans over and over
Yes.
to be able to then expedite. Okay.
So it's both of those things. So it's pre-approved plans. We're working with a developer right now who has provided us with plans. They're small plans, so inherently, they're more geared towards low-income development. They've been used, they've been built around the community. And we're going through plan review to get all of that fixed, you know, and get it to where it's like meets all of Spokane's codes. So we're working with Spencer's Group, and we'll have an architect come on to just sort of button those up. So like I said, those are smaller, but there's a mix. There's single-family detached, there's townhome, there's...
These are ones that we've come up with, or?
No, these are from a developer in the community who has donated them to us for this process. And then those will be the first batch of preapproved. And then the goal is to work with developers like Lennar and Greenstone for, you know, I build this house eight times, and it may have these four variations. And, but then, so we would get to the same point with them. We would charge a reduced plan review fee because they're already in our system.
Well, and I would, I really hope, because sometimes, obviously, they reuse stock plans, but they might have modest, very small tweaks, you know, based on what the client wants or whatever. And if it's somebody, and this is something that Scott Chesney had tried to implement when he was here, but if it's somebody that has a good track record, they meet our standards on a regular basis, they have a great experience, that even with those changes, we would still expedite because we have that relationship with them to allow them to move faster.
Oh, you touched, it was, what did he call it? Like the gold star?
Yeah, yeah. But some version of that, where, I mean, I just think we have got to figure out how we can expedite these things and truly get stuff done in two weeks. And, you know, not much longer for larger projects. And so any way we can do that, I think, is good. And I've, you know, another issue, and I don't know where we're at with these sorts of things, but I have a friend that does a lot of pole buildings. And, I mean, he used to be able to come in and get a permit the day of, just walk in and get a permit.
This is our goal for 2025, is to do over-the-counters again.
Great.
But again, I need to train staff and get staff.
As long as that's just where we're headed.
It is our goal in 2025 to reintroduce over-the-counters.
No, that's wonderful. So that's, those are my two things.
So Tammy, I will ask the consultants on their engagement piece. They kind of went over, they identified the groups, but really, what was the response from the various groups that they engaged with about these development fees and going forward?
Jeff, I'll let you answer that, but Jeff's report on that is in the report. So you can read their actual comments and things that they said. But Jeff, I'll let you give kind of a highlight.
Yeah, I think the biggest upshot from talking with stakeholders in the development community really was time is of the essence. And time is one of their biggest costs. If they, you know, they secure financing, they acquire property, every month they wait for the entitlement process to complete in terms of getting a permit and being able to proceed with construction. You know, they're paying interest on that financing. Rates have been high. So really, time and velocity has been their biggest concern. And so to the extent that increased fees mean increased personnel, increased capacity for processing and approving permits, and increased throughput and speed, they were in favor of that. Within reason. I mean, you know, they aren't saying, here's a blank check. But what, they do recognize the value proposition there and the savings that they would experience through a shortened timeline relative to, you know, drawing a project out for additional, you know, 30, 60, 90 days and the costs of holding that project while they wait for a permit.
Any other questions or comments? Councilor Bingo?
Yeah, I just want to say I'm excited for, you know, where you guys are going. I think all the work is incredibly important. I think that not raising fees made some sense for a certain amount of time. But at some point, us not charging enough has diminishing returns, even for the people that we're trying to serve. And so I think right sizing our fees as we've been going over the last few years, while, you know, temporarily painful, I think it's good for us to take our medicine and get to the place that we need to be. So I appreciate you and your team and bringing all this together. I'm so excited, pardon me. I'm so excited for a lot of the programs, even that you guys are coming up with, ways to better serve the people who are trying to build and develop in the area. And looking forward to see the results of your hard work. So, and FCS, we've worked with you guys a few times now, and I appreciate all of your hard work and your thoughtfulness and how we went about this. So, thank you.
Yeah, all of the feedback has not fallen on deaf ears, but it takes me time to implement these programs. So we hear them. I know what they want, but I cannot, you know, move as fast as they need. We are implementing the new permit system. That will be huge. It'll be huge for staff as well as our customers. We're working on the fees. We're implementing the case manager. We're doing stock plans. So we're doing things, they're coming, we're just, we're trying to do our normal job, too.
You guys are doing great. You really are.
Well, thank you very much, Tammy. We've been all anxiously awaiting this briefing, and we look forward to the changes in the coming year.
Okay, so this will be on for final reading on Monday. I'll be at briefing. And if you have any questions when you read through this between now and then, please, you know, get ahold of me, and I am happy to sit down with you.
Sorry, I forgot to mention, I think the yearly checkup on the CPI is great, and then a five-year, like, recheck-in every five years, making sure that we're not falling behind, or that we're not too far ahead, right? You know, inflation does go down sometimes, and so we can right-size based on whatever the market is.
Yeah, I think it'll be really crucial after we gather better data with the new permit system and go from there, have a much better baseline. You know, we were working with the data that we had out of Osala, which is not fantastic. So we did the best that we could right now. But that's why we need to get better data, do this again, make sure we're headed in the right direction.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone. We will see you Monday.
Thank you.
We are adjourned.
Thank you, team.